Tim, are we ready?
I think so.
All right, let's call a board meeting to order and we'll begin with the touch. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And welcome to everybody here as well as those of you viewing in the cafeteria. Glad to hear that you are out there tonight. Next on the agenda is roll call. All board members are here, please note those in attendance. And agenda approval, we will have an amended agenda and you should all have it in the backs of your packets, I believe Amy said. At any rate, to point out the reason for the amended agenda, under item 11, excuse me, let's start with the consent agenda, personnel items, A three. We have an employment request there for Reed Gunderson, kindergarten teacher. In the personnel items in your packet, it has him at step one. He actually will be BS step five as he has.
Amy, is that five or four?
Four, it said four in one place and five in another that I saw, but he has experience.
Yeah.
Oh, four years of experience. But I thought I saw BS step five, so. Rand.
He has, yep. He taught three years in cities and then also one year in Texas, plus a half year long term.
So step five.
Step five, or you're going to step four, or step five, okay. Just wanted to clarify.
Thank you. Four years' experience, step five. And then the other amendment to the agenda is under item 11. We are going to be considering approval of memorandum of understanding that is related to that employee and assuming or depending on approval of the memorandum of understanding, we would need to approve the retirement request accordingly.
That's the date that's subject to rank.
Yes. Okay. And I think that is the extent of the changes. So that is their motion to approve the amended agenda.
Second.
Motion by Ethan, second by Bob Woods. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. All right, Mustang Spirit recognition. Mr. Brock.
The elementary Mustang Spirit goes to our PTO Natalie and Beth, Beth Schultz, and all of the officers, Beth Brandt, Amy Nelson, and Hannah Fergone, just for always stepping up and being willing to volunteer. They help out with the fun run classrooms, anytime we need help. Reed gets on the phone, gives a phone call, and they're always right there. This year was in particular, the yearbook. We had considered giving up the yearbook because it is a ton of work. And they stepped right up and said, we can do this. And then they've also come forward with offering those yearbooks to our sixth grade class. So we've never done that before, but they have great hearts, big hearts, and we really appreciate all the work that you do for our school and students. Normally, I give Mustang Spirit from the elementary gift certificate from the PTO. I didn't think that was okay to give them a PTO gift certificate from themselves. We'll find something different. Thank you so much.
Appreciate it, Nat, thank you. It's a lot of work. And Natalie's name comes up in a lot of, come on in, in a lot of other areas.
All right, so Mr. Brock and I talked, and we would like to recognize a whole slew of people. Last Friday night was a great event. We had over ninety staff, over ninety staff participate in our senior spotlight event. And I think back to a few months ago when we talked about Be the Light Minnesota and all these high schools were doing the stadium lights thing, we didn't. And I think it was for the right reason because we kind of combined a lot of things into this night and really made it special. You think about our seniors, they missed out on prom, senior awards night, spring arts festival, dollars for scholars banquet, baccalaureate, all the concerts, sports seasons, they missed a ton. And that's heartbreaking. But we did, we did do something pretty cool. That parade was fun, seeing the people turn out for our seniors. What I want to, I started, you can see I started listing names of people I wanted to recognize. There were a lot of people that put time into planning for this and worked it. Student council advisors, they did a lot of the work. Dr. Stevens is here, Michelle Austin couldn't be here, her husband, I mean, the list goes on and on. But normally, student council advisors, they have a crew of thirty worker bees. They didn't have a crew of any worker bees. It's just these worker bees. So I just want to say thank you for everything you did to make that a special night for seniors.
It was a great night, weather clock right in, and the activity along the way, it was just, it was amazing.
It was impressive. Class of 2020 wants asking about it.
Yes, they are. I heard about it on the parade route.
Well, that's a good thing because who would have thought a couple months ago that this class would be the envy of others? It's still, it still is not always fair, but you know, it's just different, so.
But you made it feel special. I mean, that was something that nobody, nobody else had had, and the impact was really felt, so.
Were there prizes for the cars? There were some pretty awesome ones.
Jen's was my favorite.
He'd be ineligible because he's on the school.
It also helps because she had so much enthusiasm in the back as well.
Everybody stepped up, kids included, yeah, parents, so.
The feedback has been really positive since then. I had a mom call me about tears, how, she said her student wouldn't have gotten awards, wouldn't have gotten recognition, but tonight he did get recognition, that meant the world to her.
It was really cool. It was great to be a part of.
It was, yes. Amy. All right. Well, I'm happy to present a Mustang Spirit award tonight to Mr. Schultz. And I'm going to read the communication that I received. As part of my role as Chair of MASA Region Six, I'm happy to tell you that Superintendent Schultz was chosen to receive the 2020 District Leadership Award from our region. Congratulations, Craig. Mr. Schultz was selected from a very deserving list of nominations this year. And he, this is from Andy Olmas, who's the current president of Region Six, Superintendent at East Central. And he says, below is what the nomination said. I don't know if I should read them, but I'm going to. Craig Schultz has worked in a hostile political climate to make sure his schools have modern facilities. Craig has used creative funding sources and collaborations to make the entire community better. Most recently, Craig successfully passed a bond referendum for building a new high school. The process of passing the new high school came with extreme opposition from a very active vote no committee that focused much of their work on personal attacks at Craig and the school board. Craig's dogged persistence and professionalism has set more schools on a path for long-term success. And signed by Andy Olmas. So that is Mustang Spirit and. And you serve one or two terms as President of Region Six. Just for everybody's information that isn't familiar, obviously, it's a group of superintendents in our area. And how many districts are part of Region Six?
MASA statewide is split up into regions, and there's nine regions. Region Six, St. Cloud is the center, takes it from the Wisconsin border and over to the western side as far as Mount Rose in that area. And then goes down to the south to the metro line. Metro is a different region, and then goes up to the north. So I don't know, there's probably, I'm going to guess there's somewhere around sixty, seventy school districts within that group. The superintendents meet four times a year, as well as are in contact on the statewide pieces where the region meets four times a year. They offer various staff development through resource training and solutions, as well as gives us an opportunity to learn from other superintendents as well. A number of the things that I brought to you over the last eleven years weren't things that I necessarily came up with on my own. There were things that I saw that were successful in other districts. So it's a very great resource for superintendents. So I would suggest as a new superintendent, that you get very linked in with that group. And their director is retiring at the end of this year as well, Gary Amaroso. And Deb Hatton will be the new director of MASA from Northland, so someone that this area is very familiar with.
Did you know about this award?
I got it out the same day that you arrived.
But he's very humble.
Congratulations.
A very nice honor and, yeah.
They have four awards that are offered on an annual basis and comes from nominations of the membership. So I've been fortunate enough to win two of the four awards in the last five years.
Very nice. Any other Mustang Spirits? If not, we will move on then. And the next item is an update on the travel clubs. So Conley, Marcia.
Hi, everybody.
Hello.
I'm Marcia Maliter, I'm eighth grade science primary.
Nice to meet you, Marcia, thank you.
Hi, everybody, how are you?
Great, great.
Good, we're good.
Good, good, but thanks for having me, am I okay? All right. So because I usually hand you things, I decided not to do that today, right? Because that's bad to do at this point in our game, so my visual is this. So we all know that Greece 2020 was canceled, thankfully, before, safely before everything else went down. So over these past two and a half, three months, I have been trying to come up with alternate options, different options for the travelers from that trip and the company itself, right? EF is, do you mind if I do this? So hopefully this little schematic you guys are okay with. I worked real hard on it earlier. Oh, thank you, Mr. Schultz, Vanoway, should I say? So you can see that they have five choices. They could get a partial refund from the company. They could get a travel voucher, which they can trade or have somebody else purchase and then they would get their full cost back. And then the three in the middle are their actual trip choices that I hope to offer through MORA Community Ed. So they could transfer to the Portugal trip. And you can see the numbers next to each are the intent, are the first choices of travelers at this point. There are some travelers who have already, from the Greece trip, that are already transferred to Portugal, which you all approved last October, November. And nine currently have gotten a partial refund from EF. The travel voucher has a question mark because I think there's a couple floating out there who might want to do that amongst those seven undecided that I have in the middle. Now, the two with the orange asterisks, those are the ones that I want to, I'm coming to you with a proposal for this evening. So what I want to do is I want to split Greece 2020 into two different trips. And the reason I want two different trips is because I'm concerned about this year's juniors and this year's seniors. If they, like, this was a very popular trip. The itinerary was fantastic. A lot of people wanted to go on that trip, period. Like, that was the reason for this itinerary. They don't care to go to Portugal. They want Greece. So first, I'm asking that Greece this year for the spring break, that you approve, and I'm asking you to approve it for spring 2022. Because we already have Portugal in place for 2021, I would like to move the official, like, travel club date to 2022. The Greece summer 2021 would be for graduating students only. So this year I have six seniors who will then next year be out of their freshman year in high school, would not be eligible to go to either one of the spring trips because there, there's no way, or it's very unlikely that their spring breaks would match. Plus, I had four students who had their seniors, who had their parents coming with on this trip. So the Greece summer 2021 would be current year juniors and seniors who would be out of school next summer. And then also open it up to community members if they wanted to through Community Ed, with the understanding that it was still, the focus is still young people ages like eighteen to nineteen, right? So they would know that they're going on a trip that is geared toward younger people. Greece 2021 in the summer, I know German trip is now then, Spanish trip is now then. I put out a question to those current year juniors who would be interested in that. And I didn't get a hundred percent response, there's not many of them anyways. But are you planning on going either, on either one of these trips? Because I think you're all aware that I don't want, I want there to be as little conflict between those three opportunities as possible. Because I think that all of the opportunities they have are amazing. So the ones who responded, the majority did respond, none of them are planning, had been planning on going to the Spanish or German trip anyways. So that's my proposal that, you know, that you approve moving the Greece trip officially to spring break 2022, because this, this year's sophomores that are enrolled with ME seniors. And then approving a Greece summer 2021 trip. And, all right, any questions, please?
And Portugal would be?
Portugal would be this next academic year in April.
That's already.
Almost that Portugal and Greece are split, yeah.
Yep, I mean, if we hadn't had a, if, you know, we hadn't had a trip this next year, then it would have been logical just to have Greece. But I already have twenty-some students enrolled in the Portugal trip, adding eleven more, we're up to thirty there.
Do you have the dates for?
It's always, I, you know.
I should know, mine's going to Portugal anyways, but.
It's always around.
But there'll be two different dates, because you'll be going on both.
What do you mean?
Will you be going on those trips?
Sorry, so it's around Easter always, right? Because I try to get those days off around Easter.
Right.
This one I propose in June because any, any graduating seniors are going to want. It'd be hard to avoid the German and Spanish trip times. July is a big family time, can you go on trips? August, the students are going to be getting ready to go to college. In my mind, logically, it's easiest to go right after school's out. Yep. And again, for at least this trip, there would be minimal conflict for students going on the German and Spanish trip because this would only be for graduated seniors. And of course, they might have some seniors going on those trips as well, but they're already, they're already enrolled. So questions?
It's my Portugal trip I did first, my.
The Portugal trip is just to show you how students, like, I'm not asking for any approval.
They were asking for the dates on that.
Yeah. Do you know?
It's up April for, Amy's daughter's going sometime. Tammy's son's going.
I just fly by the seat of my pants, I don't know. Really, seriously.
My main issue was I forget my classes, so I.
I knew Portugal was coming up.
Yes, I could see.
Okay, yeah, so it's ultimately.
Transferring graduated students into a summer.
Yes, yes. Correct.
This year's seniors and next year's seniors.
Correct.
After they've graduated.
Yes, correct.
And there'd be little to no impact on the school, on the district or?
Not at all, no. Not at all. It would be these students that would still be missing some days of school.
And it's students that are choosing to do that. Do you see it as an option in that, if they want to do that?
Because they can, this travel voucher is not only to transfer to other people. They can use it to go on any of EF's trips outside of school as well. Like, out of sight of more travel club opportunities. Also, if this is approved, if this is approved, EF had gathered a bunch of other districts within the state of Minnesota, teachers who are trying to re-up or reschedule their trips for next summer and put a brochure together. So students from around the state can choose to come on my trip, my students can choose to go on their trips. That wasn't prepared by this time, otherwise I would have, you know, shown it to you for your information, but.
And the juniors and seniors going to Greece in June would probably not need to do any further fundraising because they already had done their fundraising.
All of these people are already paid in full cash.
So we're good as far as.
All of the people.
Any conflict or any competition with German or Spanish.
Correct, correct. Unless they do it on their own, of course.
Yeah, but it would be kind of unfair, all of a sudden, oh, we have more time to raise the money.
Absolutely.
When the school board approves any of these trips, Kelly's got to call the insurance company and get the school district covered on these more than approved trips. Will that, the summer one, be impacted in any way? Do we have a clue?
It's a great question. So we are, like, EF has a policy for us as well. And Kelly should have a copy of that. When I first started this, I had them print, I printed out a copy of the insurance plan that EF provides for school districts.
Because I'm thinking that a student that just graduated, so they're really not attached to more school anymore because it's June or whatever, does the insurance company still cover the liability to the school district?
Well, does it, if seniors go on.
Spanish and German, that's all.
Because they're graduating seniors, go, go on those trips, so I don't know.
But, yeah, it would be a fair question, but I know if we had seniors.
And if we only have a group of, you know, fourteen people, we're going to be with another, you know, how we share buses to accommodate costs. We'll be with other young people from different schools because the exact same itinerary wasn't offered for like, one of their official adult trips. So it would be.
I don't have a problem with it, I just want to make sure the school district is covered.
Sure, you do, I'll get you the answers, I'll get you the answers if, yeah.
That's.
That's an interesting question.
But the health insurance is covered by and is responsible by for the students either way. The travel insurance is responsible and covered by EF either way. The employees, I think is what you're talking about, they are covered during the school year and we just have to get that additional rider under the umbrella or just need a notification.
I have, I honestly have no idea, I just went to a class and they wound up that if you, out of state, if you ever send students and the board approves it, you need to make sure your insurance is covered. That's all I heard loud and clear at trainings. I just want to make sure we're covered.
We do that on a regular basis. And so the summer, I believe the chaperones, since they're going on, are already covered as well. Under that rider.
Yes, I believe you're correct. I just have to double check.
Yep, we'll make sure all the eyes are dotted, the ears are crossed.
Thank you, your charge is great. I'm just apologizing because I couldn't.
It was hard, Amy, because I haven't done it in three years.
Well, that was a good exercise.
Do you need to approve the chart?
Not yet.
Enter it into evidence?
Yes.
Any further questions or comments, concerns? Thank you for the extra effort and you have to be the liaison connecting with all of these families and.
Yes, it's approved, I'll have three trips going at the same time, so wish me luck.
If anybody can do it, you can do it.
Thanks.
All right, so I would ask for a motion to approve the revised travel plans for the travel club. I don't know how we should word the motion exactly, but that's the gist of it and.
Make a motion to approve the addition of the Greece summer 2021 EF trip.
Is there a second to the motion?
Yes, I'll second.
So we have a motion by Bob Woods, second by Tammy. Any further discussion? All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously.
I already have approval on 2022? I don't, that's, that was just the motion was, yeah, I was going to ask.
The summer 2021, so.
Yes.
I'll move to the 2020.
Okay. So we have a motion, is there a second?
I'll throw a second out there. I'm just going to bring up for a second discussion. Typically, like, for the spring 2022, we'd be looking at it in the fall, we could look ahead for that. I don't, I mean, so I don't think we really have to do the one now. And some of this, obviously, there's still things up in the air. And that's why I want to make sure that anything travel wise, that any EF, obviously, I'm aware of that too, is to make sure that everything is in place and we don't know yet what next spring is going to bring.
Correct.
Yeah.
Because this could be adjusted stuff.
And EF has been wonderful and every, I mean, I saw some horror stories out there and I'm so happy to, yeah, we're both.
Agreed, yeah.
Yeah, we're so close to it though.
So we'll approve the Greece 2022 trip with that condition that.
It's basically, you're bringing up the point that it's early, but it's also an unusual circumstance because we're shifting a trip to a future date. So it would be helpful to know that that's on the table.
And at this point, we know that they were very diligent about following the CDC and the WHO to determine, you know, their course of action. So as a matter of fact, they still, like, are not booking any trips at all. So they're not even considering it.
And it looks like students set their mind at ease that would like to.
Yeah, right.
That have a plan.
And even if that's the only eight who go in 2022, again, that's why we're here, right? Just to give them opportunity.
All right, so that motion was by Bob Jensen, seconded by Scott to approve the Greece 2022 trip. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you all for your time.
Thank you for your time, for your work.
Okay, brings us to our first open forum. Anybody like to address the board at this time? Don't go too far, Brenda. All right, not seeing anybody. So then next we will have presentation of the 2020-2021 reading well by third grade local literacy plan updates. Hello, Brenda.
Hi. In front of you, you have a copy of the presentation and you also have the updated copy of the local literacy plan with all the details on it. I'll stand over here. So reading well by third grade is by stat sheet, something that we have to address. It was amended in 2018 and has not been changed since. So the requirements remain the same. It goes with the World's Best Workforce Goal Number Two, all students in third grade achieving grade level literacy. And then it is also a data submission that we have to do on MDE by June 30th of each year. Ours is already planned for this year. And then also, we have to develop a local literacy plan that has four components. And I actually brought the, for many of these things, they come out with guidance. This is the local literacy plan guidance, and it has all the four different things. So that's exactly what you'll find in our plan, what this outlines, so it goes right with that. The screening that I submitted online, it goes with our universal screeners that we do for all kids. We do the early reading for kindergarten and the sounds per minute. And then for first, second, and third, we do the A reading fast bridge assessment as well as the words per minute reading fluency. And those are really the literacy indicators that we use. As you can see, we were not able to do our spring assessment. So MDE required that we submitted the last round of assessments that we did. So I, the winter there, those are the numbers that went into the data submission. One thing about our numbers, is the sounds per minute on the kindergarten, these percentages represent how many kids are at grade level at that time in the year. So entering kindergarten, sounds per minute, we had forty-two percent of the kids able to do it at the benchmark. By winter, which is January, like, the first, the second week of January, fifty-nine percent were on benchmark. So that's, that's pretty good. And then we know between January and April or May, when we do the next round, that's when you see the biggest growth, which we were not able to do. So this is just a snippet. Another piece with this data that you can see, as we move from kindergarten to first grade to second grade to third grade, you want to be able to make sure that you're capturing more kids and getting more and more kids proficient. And you can see that winter mark, as you move from kindergarten to first grade. And you can see that winter mark, as you move from kindergarten to first grade, the proficiency rate goes up, as you move to second grade, it goes up, as you move to third grade, it goes up. And so that's what you want to see is building and closing those gaps. So I thought that was a good picture of that. So the literacy plan elements, the first element has to be identification and reporting. So what do we use as screeners, which I just went over and they came through three? How do we look at that data? The diagnostic assessment we use is PRESS. And then how do we screen for dyslexia? We have to say that we screen for dyslexia, which is problems with reading, basically. And our fast bridge assessment, MDE says that's a good screener for that. So we were already using a screener, so we were lucky that way. And we don't diagnose dyslexia, we only can identify characteristics, having reading difficulties. And so that's what our plan outlines for that piece. And number two is parent notification about reading proficiency. So how do we let the parents know where their kids are as far as reading proficiency? Well, we have it on the report cards, we go to conferences twice a year. We have special parent teacher meetings, IEDPs. If kids are struggling, we have parents come in and we meet with them, we have progress checks. And we engage the parents in their education at all those points, as well as, you know, we have reading night, we have a student showcase. We have other things that we do too. And so that is all outlined in our second section of that literacy plan. And then the third part of the literacy plan is all about our interventions, which we know that we're pretty good at those interventions. And we have it structured in our schedule. Our MTSS framework is really, really good at that tier-one general education classroom stuff. And then the tier-two, that supplemental interventions, and we have Title I, we have the foster grandparents, we have a reading corps. All of those pieces, the kindergarten parents would be considered. So we have so many tier-two pieces there, which is great, social workers. And then tier-three, as outlined in our plan, is more about kids that need that one-on-one or mostly it's special education kids that end up in that tier-three. They don't respond to what we try to do in tier-two, so then we move them along into more intensive helps for that tier-three. And then the fourth part is what are we doing to prepare our teachers at staff development piece? We've done several things over the last three years and I've itemized them all here. You'll see at the bottom, I added ELA Curriculum Content Team. There's going to be new standards coming out, 21-22, but it might be pushed back now, I'm not sure. And then the implementation will need to be 25-26 for the next year. So we'll be starting to get ready for that because that's a big deal. Changing your reading standards is a pretty big deal. So we'll keep on that and make sure that that content team is ready to go when we have to be. And then we did some IXL training and also Google products training. During that two weeks that we planned for distance learning, we added a lot of those digital training pieces, which really helped, I think, in our implementation of distance.
What is IXL?
IXL is, do you know Study Island? We use Study Island. It's similar to Study Island, except it's more standards-based. So I can say, okay, I want to teach this standard in reading. I can pull that Minnesota reading standard up and it will come up with all kinds of stuff to do. Where Study Island is more skills-based, kind of basic skills. At IXL, you can really drill it down to the standards and we've been using that for distance learning. So the local literacy plan, as we've done the last few years, you have to vote on approval of that plan. And then once you do, I post it to our website and then it's uploaded to MDE with that, reading of that third grade data.
So I don't know if you want to do that now or you want to wait until the end?
Sure.
Okay. Any questions for Brenda before we ask for a motion to approve it? Or we can make a motion, also a motion please to approve.
Hold on one second.
Make a motion to approve the 2020-2021 Local Literacy Plan by Scott, seconded by Ethan. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion passes unanimously. Alright.
One thing about the literacy piece too is we don't know what next year's going to look like. So depending on that, some of these pieces might be moved around a little bit, just not sure, but we'll keep you posted.
Be interesting.
On planes, yeah.
Testing or assessments after having gone through a spring like this.
So I'm calling that first round in the fall of the COVID slide. What is the COVID slide? We're just not, we're not sure, so.
Alright, so changes in grading.
Yep. Alright, so there's a few pieces in between that and the grading, just to update you on some of the distance learning pieces. One is the distance learning survey we did on parents. We sent families a survey because in between that first round of distance learning and that second round where we extended it, we wanted to make sure that we heard from the parents, what's working, what's not working. And we got a lot of really valuable feedback from that survey, both challenges and all the positive stuff that was going on. And so we were really happy we sent it. We sent it April 23rd, we got three hundred and three responses, which we thought was great. And then all the questions were on a scale from one, not good, to five, really great. So, and they were just really positive and encouraging. So these are the results from the questions. How did transition to distance learning go for your family? Seventy-eight point six answered with a three, four, or five, so smooth to very smooth transition, with fifty-three percent giving a four or five. Does time spent on distance learning seem appropriate for your child? Eighty-six percent said yes, which is great. We really worked on that during that planning period to make sure that we weren't overwhelming families, so we thought that was a real win. Are curriculum resources providing your students with effective distance learning experiences? Eighty-nine point five percent said effective to very effective, so that's great. Are you satisfied with the growth in your child's learning? Eighty-three percent satisfied, they're very satisfied. And then teachers and staff being available to support them? Ninety-five point three percent agreed to strongly agree. And actually, sixty-five percent gave the teachers, all the staff, a five. So that is really impressive. I mean, we saw that and we're like, what? That's awesome. Because of course, we hear a lot of the other pieces of it and sometimes you don't hear the positive pieces. So this was really great and I put out, it just really reflects everybody's hard work during those two weeks and then adjusting afterwards. Just incredible. It was an incredible experience to go through and just really proud of everybody, so.
Was this preschool through sixth grade then?
No, twelfth grade. Yep, all families in the district, but they were directed to only fill it out once for all their kids. So a family filled it out, yeah. Little QCOM update, and Shanna gave me some of the words for this. We have focused on reading, we did for seven years. This year, we did math. It was the first year we did that and we did that because our math just, we know our reading's really high, our math wasn't as high, so we focused on math. We weren't able to finish that. So we're going to continue that focus next year and have our site-based goals off that, our PLC goals and our focus is all on math. A few adjustments had to happen. PLC, they refocused to distance learning instead of math during the fourth quarter. We thought that was best for teachers, if they could talk about what was working or not working for distance learning. They did it on Google Meet and we were able to end a couple of weeks early, actually on a recommendation from MDE. All observations, evaluations were suspended as of March 18th, so some of them did not get done. According to statute of what that lays out, we did put some letters in those files if we couldn't do an observation, just so if there's any question, those are in there. And then many goals had to be adjusted because they're based off MCAs. So I know Shanna, Jennifer, they work really hard with teachers, kind of getting other assessments or indicators that they could use besides MCAs. And then QCOM reporting was optional this year, districts don't have to report out on QCOM, they can do it next year. But we just wanted to put this update for you guys in there. The next update is Mr. Nelson's going to come in and talk about his graduation stuff and then I'll come back in.
Okay.
Interesting, can you refresh? I've added a couple of things on it or changed a few things. Like if you refresh it. There we go. Couple of things, just with graduation. We tried to do some nice things for the seniors. We put a banner up front here with their pictures. We've got some, ooh, we get blood. These are for you to wear on Sunday.
These are cool.
Heads. Lynn Byer.
Nice.
Dale Stassen, Dean Stassen, worked their butts off here. So just the custom materials, otherwise they donate it all their time. The Katie Bender really worked her butt off to make these senior signs. Those went up in yards, then she made a video, a lot of you have seen that video. The spotlight event, we already kind of talked about. Our district is, you look good with those.
All that to know.
We wanted a chance for all the graduates to wear the new stole. So Lisa Tim was taking their picture today and tomorrow. Their each student will get an eight by ten of that and we're going to try to make this as special as we can. We're going to be up on the roof on Sunday, so that's kind of, kind of cool. Hope your daughter's not afraid of heights.
Who's on the roof? I'm just dying to get details on graduation.
Why do we need to be there? Where are we standing? What are we doing?
I saw somewhere we're receiving a diploma from a board member, I'm like, okay, well that's more than I missed for me. Okay, anyway, I'm sorry.
Do you have any questions?
When do you want it?
Maybe you're going to talk about that later.
I did have that in my 44 phone.
Yeah, yeah, that's fine, no, you can do it later.
Three thirty. Thank you.
Thanks. On the roof. Sorry, Brenda.
Be careful where you step. So each district has to develop a summer learning plan to go with our distance learning plan that we already did back in March. So ours is pretty simple. They did put out some guidance again, documentation from MDE on what it should look like and some of their must-haves and some of their recommendations. Some of the things I put on here that might be relevant to us, so as a school district, they may continue distance learning if they wanted for the summer programming. You may not offer different programming to different kids. So if we had one type of programming coming in for our distance learning, we couldn't then invite targeted services to come on site. That would be seen as inequitable for kids. So whatever you do for one group of kids, you have to do for all during the summer. So we were very mindful of that. And then must provide two days of planning for teachers prior to instruction, which we built into that, so we're good with that. And then start date and schedule is up to the local education agency. And so we are doing ESY programming. It's for special education kids that qualify. It has to be documented in their IDLP, which is their distance learning plan. I suppose they're, yeah. So it's the new thing. And so seventy-nine kids qualified for ESY. Forty-nine elementary, thirty high school. We, what we do is we call every parent, we contact every parent, and the parent has the chance to opt out if they don't want their child coming to ESY. So we have thirty-eight participating, nineteen at the elementary, nineteen at the high school. And then we chose, actually, it's a recommendation from Rum River. We'll be going with distance learning for our ESY program. And eleven teachers are going to work with distance learning, we don't need Paris, so we won't be employing Paris for ESY. They'll all have a device, all of the ESY special education kids will have a device. And there'll be twelve sessions, those are the dates. And the schedule is Tuesdays, they'll do a Google Meet with their teacher for thirty minutes. And then Wednesdays, they'll do the independent work part. Kind of some additional notes for our summer programming, there's no high school summer school. Except for high school, we'll be offering credit deficit seniors night school, so they can catch up. And that will be distance learning, so it'll be an equitable platform with our ESY. No elementary targeted services will happen this summer. But as a change to what we're doing, instead of bringing, starting targeted services like we do usually do in like the end of October or November, we're going to start it early in September. So we'll give all those extra weeks to our targeted services. In our summer plan, we won't need to account for transportation, food service. There is no childcare during the summer. There's no grading for ESY and that's in the recommendations. Attendance is taken by the case manager, but parents can opt out. And then we have to submit a survey, which I'll do after this meeting, and then to MDE. And then I have to post our summer learning plan to the website, which I'll do next week prior to starting ESY. Do you guys have any questions about the summer learning? Okay.
The twelve sessions.
Mm-hmm. So on Tuesdays, the teacher will meet in a Google Meet for thirty minutes.
Thirty-minute sessions.
And then on the Wednesday, they'll have about, the goal is to have thirty minutes of independent work for them to complete. So about an hour each of those weeks.
It's only an hour?
An hour. Thirty minutes on the Tuesday, thirty minutes on the Wednesday. Yeah.
Did the ESY used to be like two hours for students?
Yes. And it usually includes transportation and more support. Yeah, so.
Eleven teachers for thirty-eight kids for an hour.
Yes. Jenny Berry, this is her schedule and so if we do have more questions, I can ask her. And that does include, I'm sorry, that includes preschool too. That includes all the way down to babies. Because Ashley does a lot of home visits during the summer for those two one-year-olds.
That's part of the thirty-eight, correct?
Yes. Yeah, and she's, she's there on those, those preschool teachers are a part of that, those eleven teachers too. Speech, both Melanie and Lori do speech, they're a part of those eleven teachers. So there's different pieces there. There's a OT that happens out of Rum River too, that's a part of that eleven. So a lot of different services.
What is it, just the eleven of our teachers?
Eleven special ed teachers are involved in the process.
Because OT is a one teacher.
Well, employee staff and your special education people. So distance learning grading, this has been a lot, this has been a controversial subject since distance learning came to be. And we know by being on the commissioner calls every week, I mean, it's just been quite the thing. So finally, MDE did come out with their guidance. And so ours is based off and follows MDE's guidance. Theirs is all about that equity-based grading for distance learning. So decision-makers must approach it with an equity mindset, capturing all kids, must reflect on an effort to confront and eradicate known inequities, which I like those words. And then traditional A through F systems probably, they don't work for distance learning. And then the model must provide choices while realizing that there's going to be consequences with our choices, such as probably isn't very good for GPAs and things like that, which we'll go over. we'll go over. So the high school grading system is actually outlined in the high school handbook, which you guys approved. So one of the pieces in the guidance from MDE is if we amend that, then you have to approve that amendment. So that's why I'm showing you this detail. So in the handbook, it says that the high school goes on a four-point system and that it's a nine-week period. And there's an honor roll based off that. So those are the pieces that are in the handbook. And then also, there's several references to overall GPA, minimum GPA, average GPAs. And so all of those things will be affected by the way we grade quarter four for distance learning. And so high school teachers are going to have the following options for grading for quarter four. A pass, which means the child was engaged with the activities and stayed connected. If they get a pass, it's a full credit for that course, and it does not impact the GPA. Semester two grade will be a pass if the student was passing at the end of third quarter. So their overall semester two grade will be a P if they were anything from a D minus above at the end of third quarter. I know. I hate, I think I shouldn't have said it that way. And then, well, it's kind of late in the game, so it's okay.
Right, right.
And then an I. An I means incomplete. So the student during distance learning did not engage, they didn't stay connected, so the teacher was not able to evaluate or assess their performance. When they get that I, they won't receive the credit, but it doesn't impact their GPA. And they'll have a chance to make that work up by September eleventh of 2020. So if they finish their work by that date, that I will turn to a P. If they don't finish that work, then that I will turn to an F, and they'll lose the credit completely for that class. And then the teachers do have an F option, a fail option. If the child was failing at the end of quarter three and in addition to that, did nothing during distance learning, then they just, they checked, they got a F. That was a choice they made. They get the F, and they don't receive credit, and they don't, that does impact their GPA, and they don't have a chance to make that up. They're just done with that. So third quarter grades remain letter grades and aren't going to be used for the GPA. Semester one will be used for GPA and rate. Do you guys have any questions about that?
That's a lot of daddy. But how many calls or concerned parents have you had?
Have you had very many concerned parents about the high school grading? No, he says no. More, I mean, the teachers have been very concerned about the grading and the assessing and how do we, you know, I mean, we just are doing, sticking with recommendations.
Unprecedented. It's just that.
Learning ourselves.
For better or worse, grades are pretty important to some people.
So elementary quarter four, we're going to do a pass, those engaged learners, and an NE if a child was not engaged and did not stay connected. The NE will remain on their report cards. We won't be changing that because the child will have missed some of those standards in the spring. If the child moves over the summer, we want that incoming school to know that that didn't happen, or next year's teacher to be able to tell. So that will stay on their report card as a gap in their learning. And we won't be doing a semester two final grade for the elementary report cards. And then we don't have it in our elementary handbook. We don't have our grading stuff in our handbook, so we don't have to go through the approval process on that, but we do the high school. So the next piece would be you considering the grading for the high school and then approving that amendment to the high school handbook.
Do we take that in one motion? At two? Do we have a motion to approve the grading changes and the change to the high school? Second motion by Bob Woods, second by Tammy. Any further discussion?
As Brenda had said, we had a lot of discussion about that. There's a lot of students that would like to have their grade. There's a lot of teachers that would like to get the grade that they feel the students should get. But based on the guidance from MDE, this is what we are operating on.
And moving forward to next year with a plan, whatever that looks like, we'll be having more conversations surrounding grades because this isn't sustainable. And we'll have to come up with something that works. So, yeah. All right, thank you so much.
All in favor of that motion?
Oh, they are.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. And that motion passes unanimously. And thank you.
Thank you.
No problem. Thank you very much. All right. Consent agenda. Any requests to remove any items from the consent agenda? Not need a motion to approve it as amended.
So move. Second.
Motion by Ethan, second by Scott. Discussion. We have a gift donation from Bill and Julie Olin for FFA in seventy-five dollars. We acknowledge that, accept that, and thank the Olins for that donation. And we have to push now items. Retirement. Further discussion? If not, all in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. And that motion passes unanimously. All right. Next, we will consider membership renewal in the Minnesota State High School League. And so we are by way of approving that, saying too that we watched why we play, we've reviewed the code of conduct, and we have done both of those. So motion to approve membership renewal. Motion by Ethan, second by Bob Jensen. Any further discussion? All in favor of that resolution, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. And that motion passes unanimously.
I'm just hearing.
Hi, Chris. We watched the new video.
Yep.
And we are, we have read the code of ethics, so.
Okay.
Are we good?
There's been no changes in any of the fee structures or anything that should be added or anything.
No.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean, I didn't mean to rush or to blow right by you. But yeah, anything that you want to enlighten us on?
Everything is the same. We haven't changed any piece. It's all in the packet. It's just basically going through and getting approval. Have to move on to next year.
Thank you. All in favor of that motion, say aye or didn't you vote? Anybody opposed? Motion passes. All right. Next, consider approval of a memorandum of understanding between Education Minnesota or ESP Union and the school district for the contract July one twenty nineteen through June thirtieth twenty twenty-one. You have that in your packet, and that is related or it would affect potentially one employee. And as you can see, that would be in consideration of Jackie Thompson maybe changing or wanting to change her effective retirement date. Craig, anything else?
That comes as a request from the school district. Normally, we would have retired once again in the consent agenda. Jackie had talked to me a while back, and she was considering retiring July thirty-first. And as we were talking about that with my own retirement coming up June thirtieth, Jackie was going to retire on the thirty-first. And there was a little tension in the office, in the finance department. And as we moved forward with the, being notified that the auditor was going to be a different auditor, Tammy and I talked a little bit about what we could do to help ease that transition. And that would be if Jackie would stay until after the audit, before we would be moving into hiring her replacement, or I should say, having her replacement start at that time. So she has agreed. The one thing was the memorandum of understanding. And I did contact the three board members that were a part of the bargaining for that unit and asked them what they thought. What it does is it gives, when Jackie would retire on the thirty-first, she would be able to be paid out for the vacation prior to that. Under the circumstances, there's no place to go. The vacation time to be used is relatively limited. So the only thing that this does is extends that ability for her to sell that vacation back to six months from July thirty-first to December thirty-first. I guess that's five months. So that was our request from the district. She said she would be willing to, if the board would extend that to December thirty-first, she would stay until after the audit. If not, she'll retire on the thirty-first of July. And so that's why we pulled her retirement request and put it in after the memorandum. That way, we'll know what date term of retirement would be for. So that was, again, a request that came from the district for her to do that to help ease some of the tension in the office over the next few months.
Thank you. Somebody want to make a motion to that MOE? So move.
Second.
Motion by Tammy, second by Bob Woods. Any further discussion? All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign. And that motion passes unanimously. Then we will now move to approve the retirement request of Jackie Thompson, and that would be effective December.
December thirty-first.
Thirty-first.
She could retire earlier if the audit's done, if she chooses to. But she has agreed to stay at least until the audit is finished. With the new auditor coming on board, we felt that would be sufficient. It'll be December thirty-first.
And we need a motion.
Make a motion to approve Jackie's retirement to December thirty-first.
Yep. Second, Scott. Motion by Bob Woods, second by Scott. And also want to acknowledge Jackie for how many years, many years of service to the district.
Do you know that, Amy, by any chance? I believe in our discussion, she's been doing payroll since nineteen ninety-two. Every time that I ask her why she does something a specific way, she can go to her records and she can pull out an email from Keith Lester or from John McBroom or from whoever that explains exactly how she was to do something to the date she was told to do it that way. She's a very detailed, very highly detailed and very good with documentation. So her services have been greatly appreciated by the district. And her flexibility to extend too is appreciated.
Yeah. Thank you. Yes, so with thanks for her loyalty to the district and the many years of service. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. And that motion passes unanimously. All right. We have another memorandum of understanding. This one between Education Minnesota Local eighteen oh two and the school district. And this is related to QCOM, extends QCOM through June thirtieth twenty twenty-two. We need a motion to. Second. Motion by Scott, second by Ethan. Any further discussion?
This is all money for the state, correct?
Yep. Anything to add there, Craig?
No, this is the, this is the memorandum about to continue the QCOM program. And that's the quality compensation program that we have, and set up and work with for the teachers. They have to vote and come up with approval for the memorandum, and this is a renewal of that memorandum.
Requirements for performance pay is pretty well spelled out in the agreement, so. Any further discussion? All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Okay, next item, consider approval of a resolution providing for the sale of general obligation, school building bonds. Turn it over to you. We have the resolution in our packet, but.
For the next four items, I've asked Tammy to sit in the next four items. So if you have any questions, any specific details that you would like, she's here and available to answer your questions. With this resolution, this is for, this is for the additional, help me out, Tammy.
Are you on thirteen? This is for the bond sale that Greg Crowe was hopeful at the last.
And it's the only difference in this one in comparison to the one that we had previously. Instead of finance manager, it identifies the superintendent in those places.
That's actually on item fifteen.
Is that on fifteen?
That's the policy revision. We're considering approval of the sale of the bonds.
Okay, just the sale. Okay, that's the one that Greg Crowe presented.
Yes.
So we just need a vote?
Need a motion. We need to move that resolution. Was that a motion, Bob?
Nope, it was a Tammy, and then I seconded it.
Tammy. Motion by Tammy, second by Bob Woods. Any further discussion? Resolution in their packet. Any other discussion?
Well, I was going to say, if everybody saw the email today that others had put out or just on their mark, you know, some of their information, rates are still down. I got the email also from Caroline, who had also received that based on her city stuff. Sell school funds and not, you know, get going just because the rates are still so excellent.
Next board meeting. Hopefully, we.
We all feel the same way.
Breathing sighs I am on from now. But you're right, and this should be, this will take place within the next month, and we will have a little bitter by June thirtieth. All right. This is a roll call. So Bob Jensen.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
All right. And that motion or that resolution is adopted with six voting in favor, zero opposed. So it passes unanimously. Thank you. Item fourteen, consider approval of Minnesota Trust resolution to become part of Minnesota Trust with the intent to use PMA slash Minnesota Trust for the investments of the bonds. Tammy, anything you would like to?
We have proposals from three very good companies and all very competitive. And the proposal that PMA provided just gave really good explanation of the process. Just felt very comfortable in choosing that. Circle of investments, proceeds.
And so we do need a motion there to approve PMA.
So move approval. Second.
Motion by Ethan, second by Scott. Any further discussion?
This is a covenant that we haven't used in the past. As Tammy said, we interviewed three. The basis points, the rates were very close, very similar. And the reason, one of the reasons that you need to do this is that since it is a new investment advisor that we're going to be using, as well as we do not have an account in Mintrust at this time, but this will help us get that account set up as well. So when we receive those proceeds, then they'll go into this account.
Mitch? Sorry, Bob, go ahead.
This wasn't a thing that you needed to put in our RFP for. It's a professional service, so you don't have to.
Right.
Okay.
We still got to.
Right. I realize that. I just want to make sure we didn't have to legally advertise.
Do school districts make up Minnesota Trust? Or are there other entities?
There's other governmental entities in there.
Just not familiar, but, okay, we have a motion. This one does require roll call vote as well. So Bob Jensen.
Aye.
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 And that resolution is adopted with six voting in favor, zero opposed. And that passes unanimously. All right, item fifteen. Now consider first reading of revision to the policy post issuance debt compliance. And honestly, I did read it, but Tammy, I'm gonna let you talk. It was like, where's Waldo? What are the differences?
The biggest thing is the SEC is requiring amendments to Rule fifteen C two dash twelve of the Securities and Exchange Act. So it's really just adopting our policy to make sure that we're following all those procedures with the changes that the SEC made.
And then also identifying the superintendent as the investing agent or whatever.
It's the problem.
He was the finance manager in the.
The resolution, it'll, it allows the superintendent to delegate district staff to carry out those procedures.
Ethan and I are on the policy committee. Did you want to enlighten us anymore? Or have any other questions?
I did the same as you. I highlighted the things that were different. And I, and I think you've touched on both of the things that I identified too. I think it's fairly clear.
So this is the first reading we will adopt in next month, is that correct? So information, and we will move on it and do it. Okay, so school auditing services or district auditing services, recommendation to approve Bergen KDB for auditing services twenty nineteen to twenty twenty school year for the financial audit. And we, a motion to approve that.
Who? Second.
Motion by Scott, second by Bob Woods. Discussion, Tammy, I'll let you maybe just talk a little bit about who you interviewed there or talked to.
We had advertised in the paper. I also put out some requests from five different audit services to decline. And we have proposals from three of them. And Bergen KDB came in, set the lowest, and also highly recommended from other school districts. So I felt very comfortable with putting them.
So that gives on a recommendation from Tammy as the most.
Actually higher than we used to be.
Yes. Well, we didn't know how good we had.
We had a pretty good idea.
Well, we.
We had gone out.
We had gone out a couple times, so.
Well, as, as they came in, of course, and these are thirty to thirty-five page proposals. And I'm the bottom line guy. I just gotta see where the fees are. And the first one came and Tammy knew exactly what I was looking for. She said, it's higher. It's a bottom line. And I looked at it, but gave me a heart attack on the first one. And then the second one was a little bit better than the third one that came in was, it's higher. But at least it's reasonable. Thanks.
Anything else? Otherwise, all in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes unanimously. Thanks, Tammy. All right, brings us to board report and administrative update. Board member meetings. I kept two meetings.
The MEF fundraiser was canceled this year?
Really, already?
Yeah, already. Should be getting a postcard to mail for it, but, yep, it's been, it's been canceled.
We should recall golf tournament, it's been canceled.
Unfortunate. Um, okay. How about, I don't know, other board member reports? Activities, community ads. Chris still here, Tim? Have a report in the packet. I just wondered if Chris Osterich was still out there. We have her report.
She's in her office.
Want me to go get her?
Yes, please. Let's ask her, she wanted to make.
I got her.
You're good.
Oh, there.
Sorry. It's gonna be really quick. We were waiting.
This time.
Board reports?
Yeah, we're, we're to community ad eighty.
Okay, I'm gonna go right with the coaches. The coaches of distance learning all the way through this spring. I believe that they're still sending stuff out as of today. I think tomorrow's the last day that they can do this. And then we can't have any contact with them again until June fifth. That is the day after school is out. I have been attending the state high school league meetings. And today they have finally come out and said that their goal is to go back to in person on June fifteenth. That's what they're going to talk about at their board meeting on Monday, the first. So we will get some guidance from there. So I'm asking, you know, if we can, if you guys are okay with us doing that. There's some that are waiting until after July. But I think this is good for the kids. I think they need to get back out again. They have set some guidelines for us. Couple of them are, if you're in a gym, you can have nine kids and one coach. So it's limited to ten people in the gym. If you're in an ice rink, you can have two pods out there. At the football field, you can have three pods out there as long as you're spaced. There's no contact, there's no sharing of equipment. Basketball, they have to have their own basketball. And volleyball, there is no bumping between two people. Tennis, they can work on serves, they can hit off the backboards. They still don't want them touching the same ball. So that's phase one that they're in. Phase two will loosen up a little bit down the road. But I have been talking with the coaches. I've been telling them as of this morning that we're hoping for June fifteenth as long as you guys are okay with June fifteenth. That's what we're gonna plan on doing.
What do you do, six foot social distance?
Four, well, it just depends on the score. I mean, if you're doing tennis, you've got your courts and.
Volleyball, for instance. We were just talking about it, no contact.
Yep, you're gonna probably be bumping off the wall. You're gonna probably disturbing some off the wall. The coaches are gonna have to come up with a plan. They're going to have to come up with a safety COVID plan as well that I'm gonna have on file. And they need to have a plan as to what, what are they going to do? What are they gonna be working on? What skills are they gonna be working on? It all has to be individual as of right now. Any thoughts on that?
Good luck.
Coaches are itching. They wanna do something. As of right now, the weight room is off limits. We cannot be in the weight room. We can bring equipment outside, but everything has to be sanitized between every single before anybody else touches it. So that's gonna be trying as well. So we're trying to get creative with Troy as to what he might be able to do. He doesn't wanna bring his equipment out in the elements. Don't blame him for that. So we'll have to figure something out. So as of right now, the weight room is not being talked about opening up yet. Probably wise. Yep. Community ed wise, our instructors contacted us a couple of weeks ago saying that they were canceling everything through June, or actually July. I still have a couple of classes scheduled in August. I don't know if we will be able to do that or if the instructors will cancel those as well. So community ed with driver's ed, Tom is going to do some online class, online class coming up starting in June. We have been given permission to start behind the wheel as long as we have safety planning. We have that, we've got it posted in the car. Instructor students will wear face masks. They'll be sanitizing everything between students. So we're trying to be as safe and as careful as possible, but yet get back out and do some stuff.
At least their two families have the option to wait.
Yes. We are getting backed up. So kids are frustrated, imagine. Any other questions?
Thanks, Chris.
Thank you.
Transportation of buildings and grounds.
Good evening. Um, transportation, the last few weeks, we've updated the bus garage, if you haven't been down there. New carpet, some new tile in the bathroom and an entry maze. They painted the walls and we actually got a new toilet in the bathroom. So it's really looking sharp. The new camera systems are in the fleet. Victoria was able to salvage some of the old cameras and install them in our van. So every vehicle will have a camera for driver safety. And tonight, at six thirty, a few of our buses were involved in a drive-by parade for Mr. Glenn Sawyer. Ninety-fifth birthday today. He drove bus number six for, gosh, forty-some years. I don't know exactly, but it's, it was kind of an honor to reach out to them and say, can we be, be involved? So that happened tonight at six thirty.
Thanks for doing that.
Yeah.
Did you go?
I did not. It was when this started, so I didn't know. No, it was, it was an honor.
Buses have been busy with.
Yeah.
Recycling.
Yeah, in fact, it's nice to get them out and running because the fuel and the tanks need to get worked up a little bit, so.
Need a little, need to go a little farther than the park for it.
Right. We, we're working with the city of Moore on Vine Street, just on the west side of the high school. They have to redo that street and there's some sewer city sewer water stuff that they have to deal with. And so talked to the city, when they resurface that, they're gonna actually redo our driveways up to the back parking lot. Because you notice if you go back there, it's all gravel.
It's a mess.
So Joel McGrath is gracious enough to say, yeah, he'll include us. And when they get it done, they'll just tack off whatever footage we need to make our entrances easier for the buses and everybody. We're gonna take care of that this summer. Both schools, the Sodan Crews have been working hard. They started their summer cleaning early. You may or may not know that we, I decided we're not gonna hire summer help for kids this year just because COVID and we have extra time. So we gave, I gave them the green light a couple of weeks ago. Get in a teacher's classroom, start shampooing and all that stuff, and get a head start. Acrylic coating on the new tennis courts should be happening real soon. We called them last week and they have to wait for the overnight lows to be a little higher than they have been. But I think they'll be starting relatively soon. And then on Monday, the contractor that installed the dehumidification in auditorium last year is gonna start up the AC and get that going. And if you remember, we held off on starting that up because we wouldn't need that for the winter. But now we'll get that going, so. Other than that, if there's any questions, let me know.
Thanks, Jeff.
Yep.
Sounds good. Principals updates. Randy, Brett?
I just wanna give a couple shout-outs quick. First, I mentioned Galen Dean Stassen and Lynn Byer with those masks. Hundred and fifty of those, that took some serious time. Really blessed to have them as a partner. Lisa Tim, so impressed with this woman, local photographer. She, we hired her for one thing, and that was to take the eight by ten pictures of the graduates. At Senior Spotlight, hundreds and hundreds of photos she took. She was not trying to make money. She put those out for everyone to have for free. She's doing the same thing with commencement. She's gonna have three cameras there, pushing all those out for families for free. The paras, that curbside pickup that happened today, they, we could not have done it without our par professionals. They stepped up so big. You know, the teachers, they kinda got the glory. They got to show up for a little bit, hand the ice cream out to the kids. The pairs are the ones that, they did the work. We could not have done it. Lance Strandy's business, Blue Star Graphics, both senior yard signs that we've put in yards and this banner out front, we're getting that stuff at cost. All the labor, he absorbed that. Not only do our yard signs look super sharp, so if you've seen some other schools, and they're kinda ugly compared to ours.
They're clean, they are.
Not only do they look good, we're getting a darn good deal up. And then I just, the last shout-out, I wanna say, these election judges.
Wow.
They went so above and beyond, the hours they put in during a pandemic. I mean, I can't believe we have people like that, so. Other than that, I just wanted to see what questions you had about commencement. This, today, Mr. Peterson pre-recorded Mr. Schultz's welcome and the student speeches. That was only in case the weather's bad or the wind prevents us from hearing. We're planning to do all the speeches live. One of my bigger concerns right now is trucks. If families showed up with a truck and everything's on the radio, there won't be speakers. So a lot of trucks don't have a little glass window that you can open. So how will they hear? That's one concern I have. Porta potties, we did decide to get three of them. We had people at Senior Spotlight, I saw a few people sneaking off to the bushes. So not gonna do that at commencement.
More on, that would, that would happen to them then.
Board members, I'd love it if you could be there by three thirty. I anticipate the traffic will get backed up.
So where do you want us? Just tell us what you expect or what we need.
For you?
Yes.
Sit in six chairs on the ground right below the, kinda right up in the front entrance. And you're gonna listen to the speeches. And then when it comes time, I'll read the names. You'll hand out the diplomas as they drive up. And you'll go back and have a seat.
And this is wellness center?
Nope, this is elementary, the big parking lot, where the curbside pickups go on.
Okay. We can, we should park maybe on the, on the bus drop-off lanes that we should park or somewhere someone's not messing with.
Um, well, you probably should pull into the main lot. Because, well, I'm sorry. Two of you should, you two should. Actually, you're gonna drop off your daughters at three fifteen.
If you don't want us to come in the drop-off driveway.
You guys should park in the back of the bus lot.
Back of the bus.
So bus lot loop in the back.
Yep. Okay.
How does that work?
Wellness center. We'll figure it out.
The, there will be a few families that, you know, maybe split. The parents don't wanna be in the same vehicle. That's why that bus lot, that'll fill up. We have about ten, I think, students that will be the second vehicle. So they'll be parking over there.
So because Lisa is doing such a great job with photos, we don't need life touch then this year? Or will they also be, we aren't working with them?
They're not willing, they're, they're not able to do this.
They can't.
Because of COVID. Yeah.
We don't know why we need.
But I love, Lisa's amazing.
Yeah.
It's that small-town school spirit pride thing. I mean, she's, she feels bad for these students, so that's why she's stepping up. One, one thing I should tell you is I have had about seven or eight complaints. Phone calls and emails, all of them were, were mothers of seniors and they all had the same exact complaints. And it was, I want my kid to walk across the stage. Why are other schools doing it? Why can't we do it? I just heard Bram did it last, last week. I heard Pelican Rapids did it. You know, there's schools that are doing this. Mr. Schultz and I, we sit on a call with the commissioner with a bunch of others once a week. And they're very clear. You cannot let the students out of the vehicles. So I guess I'm asking you, I, for your support.
Thank you for following the rules.
Yes. That's, that's what we're trying to do, is do what's, we're told of. Makes us look insensitive when all these other districts are allowing it. Is Princeton allowing it?
No.
They're not? Good. I know Pine City isn't.
Let's not compare ourselves to Princeton right now.
That's good.
Not because of you, but.
We were compared to Princeton quite a bit during that referendum.
And it had nothing to do with Mr. Mulday.
Oh, really? I don't need to know any of that.
No, it's the right thing to do. People find loopholes, but it doesn't mean they're doing the right thing. Let's, let's stay on your level of being the world's greatest, following the rules. We're gonna do the right thing.
You know, two weeks ago, the commissioner called, there was, she scolded the districts that were doing this, so.
There was one or two that had, and had been reported to them. She laid that out, that is not accepted.
I think we all got an email from the, from our professional saying, please follow the rules.
Well, and I think that that, that Senior Spotlight last Friday night really kind of makes up for, you know what I mean? I mean, you can't replace it, but it really, it was something extra special that the kids weren't expecting. And so, you know, I, I think we're okay doing what we're doing.
That is really special.
Okay, thanks, Brett.
Three roles that you've all presented. So we're next. We're gonna both cover a couple of things on here. So the first thing, the books for students. The county and the social workers worked on a grant and it provided two hundred books. Actually, just under, yeah, a hundred and ninety-eight books. The county and the social workers worked on a grant, and it provided two hundred books, actually just under, like, a hundred and ninety-eight books. And so what the social workers did is they had the teachers identify kids that we were having problems connecting with, and then teachers could come in and shop the books, and then hand-deliver them to the kids. And so that was really exciting. We did have Mr. Grun, Mr. Corrigan, and Mr. Ballmer, they got a school van. They took several of the books, and then they went around to the kids' house, all three of them. That was very exciting. That was an exciting time for everyone. So that, you know, thank you to the social workers for organizing that. That took a lot of effort. The county wrote the grant and got the books, so it was a really good thing. Our MTSS team, which you here has mentioned, which is our process of helping kids in school. Well, during fourth quarter, we repurposed ourselves to be, what can we do for families? And so one of the things that we did is we had teachers identify families who might be struggling with the whole distance learning process. And then we partnered them with an additional teacher or an additional support person. So in addition to their general education teacher, then they had someone else who could come in and help the families at times when that teacher wasn't with them. And so that was probably a fifty-fifty success. But, you know, we just tried every end that we could with families that were struggling. So that was one thing that we did. Another thing we did as an MTSS team is we came up with the homework help options. So we had the homework help at moreschools.org. It was very popular. What did we get?
We had one spam email.
So that's all we got.
We're putting the options out there. The resources are there, but no one took advantage of that, so. Or it's just group communication on the teaching staff.
And then the open math time we had on Monday nights.
The first week we had one, and then we did, we had three weeks of zero there.
We kind of discontinued that. But our, our motto is, we're going to try whatever we can. We'll put it out there. If people tap into it or use it, great. If they don't, well, at least we tried, and so that's what we've been trying to do.
Today was our virtual move-up day. We, there was a lot of sadness with the dropping off of materials, but right away this morning, the students got to virtually meet their classroom teachers for next year in grades one through six. So I know as a second grade, with my second grade daughter, she was super excited to see Mrs. Berry for next year as well, so. And then today was our first day of the material drop-off, the collection, and it went really well. We had purchased eight hundred dilly bars for any of the young students that come through the line, and it sounds like we handed out about six hundred and seventy-five dilly bars today, and I had to order five hundred more from Dairy Queen for tomorrow. But that went really well, and to Mr. Baki, I know Nancy, Grace, and Roberta really helped a lot organizing all of that, and it went really well today. It was, it was a little bit slower than we expected, but it was steady throughout, throughout the day, and I think we'll be busier tomorrow.
And something I didn't put on here was kindergarten. For our incoming kindergarteners, we weren't able to do roundup or basically anything for them. So we're putting together, we do that district newsletter on the Samurs. We're going to use that platform to do a virtual kinder roundup or welcome to kindergarten with all kindergarten videos and a lot of our district's information. And then we're going to send that out probably Tuesday to all the kids that we suspect will be coming. So if they haven't registered yet, we're going to, please come and register, so that's what we're doing.
Any questions that we can answer for you?
And the weather is cooperating for, for, please drop off in winter. Very slick, very quick, just in, out.
And really, Mr. Baki, he's been instrumental in that, and he was out there all day.
Got timelines to show.
Yep.
So extra special thing, did he have a few dilly bars?
Seriously?
Pretty hot out.
All right, thank you. Superintendents updates.
Hi, my report, I mentioned the campus meeting and the people of the bond election. The resale report is presented by Ellers. You're familiar with that. The bonds will be sold prior to June 30, and we'll be expecting proceeds until July 16. And as we talked about earlier, we'll be using PMA for investors with that piece. The contracts with ICS Professional Services for the new build have been signed and are ready to go. I was contacted by ICS that they have their team identified, and they would like to start meeting next week. And so we tentatively set a meeting for 2:00 on Tuesday. And I guess what I need to know from the board is who will be representing the board on the Leadership and Oversight Committee. And then the distance learning continues. We'll be doing that through the fourth day. It'll be the last boot day. As they had mentioned, service on a selfie is for next week, and June 5th is the last teacher day. Commissioner continues to have our teleconferences. We just had one again today at 4:30. As the principals had mentioned, rather than just me sitting on those, those are the superintendent and directors. I do have a group of about ten people that are sitting in on those with me, the principals. And I invite the food service, ESP leadership, teacher leadership, so that they can hear directly from the Department of Education. It's not just the commissioner. We call him the commissioner calls, but she has her assistant commissioners on there, so there's generally about five people on there that are answering questions. They had set up an MBE distance learning email, and so any of the individuals that are on the call can email in, and then they take the general consensus of what the most frequently asked questions are, so that they can answer them for the biggest groups. And so they're dealing with the most direct issues, as well as laying out what they're expecting us to do for the next week or two. It has been kind of frustrating the past couple of months, because as things change, just about the time you think you have figured it out, they change it again. And so now that's what we're trying to figure out, and we're really trying to reach out there with what's the startup of school going to be like in the fall. Request for proposal of the auditing services, as Tammy did mention, we did have three that came in on that. We did put out an RFP, so we did put it out in the paper to the general public, as well as she did solicit bids as well. And we did get the five that she did solicit. Three of them did put in a bid. And two just said at this time they don't have the capacity to take on additional schools. So that's as much as I have. And so I did talk with Karen briefly about what, how we can go about getting board members. Previously, we had the executive committee, I believe, the chair and vice chair. We're on the LNO committee. This is just the initial startup, the beginning committee, and then the superintendent sits on that, as well as building principals, buildings and grounds. Meet twice a month, I think it was, was like the first and third during the design, and then once we get into the more detailed stuff, it was more often, and then once we get into the ground, it's even more often. So this would be over the next couple of years that members would be participating in this. I'll be setting this up. Dan has agreed to come into the meetings through June, and then he'll be taking over July 1st as the superintendent.
Well, ICS, as Craig mentioned, is eager. I would say that's an understatement, but they're ready to get moving, and they would like to have a meeting already next week with the leadership and oversight. So knowing that, and because Dan will be coming on, we're in the transition process. Ethan and I did meet with him just to get some input from him and hear some thoughts that he had regarding the design process. And so, I don't know, Dan, you want to just kind of give us your thoughts and?
Sure, I could talk a little bit. Yeah, so Karen had called me and asked to meet with Ethan and her, and we talked about, you know, what's, what's been done in the past and what would be a good process to follow. And, you know, obviously, this is a huge, huge project that we want to make sure that all the board members are involved in. And as I understand it, leadership and oversight, you go to these meetings, they inform you, and then you, the board members bring that information back to the rest of the board members. Later on down the line, there's, there's a design phase. And it sounds like during the elementary times, when they built that elementary and the Wellness Center, that you had people on leadership and oversight, and then you also had people on that design phase too. So that's kind of what we talked about. And I think in the past, the executive council wasn't part of the Leadership and Oversight Committee, and then the other board members, I think, weren't involved in that design phase. So I think that that, we had decided that would be a good plan to follow. And obviously, Craig had mentioned, you know, the principals, the superintendent, the activities director, building and grounds, and even sometimes bringing in Kelly and Tammy when needed, and things of that sort. And obviously, the more of that design phase will be, you know, the high school principal, AP, the staff, community members, things of that sort. I think we'll get some more direction down the road with hold in that design phase. I did, I did call Jeff Schultz, I think his name is, right? He's one of the, he'll be one of the lead people working with the moron, and he is extremely excited for, I mean, he, I called him when they're parking around here, and he talked to me when I almost got back to Princeton that day. So we talked about thirty minutes, and he just went into the history and how impressed he is with the community and the board members, and, and the history of how the, the build projects have been going. And he's, he wants to make sure that this project is done and done well, and something that Mora can be proud of for the next seventy-five years, he said. So he, he is going to guarantee that we're going to get a, a super product and super customer service. And so I was really excited to get to talk to him, and we're going to have a meet and greet on Friday with myself and Craig, and I think Karen and Ethan, I'm not sure if you were able to make it, but at least one person.
Not Friday, you have to.
Yeah, yeah. So anyways, sure, sure. So that's kind of what, what, what we thought it should look like or would look like. And yeah, so I'm just excited to be a part of that process.
I'm assuming the whole design process will look a little similar to how we approached the last. Were you, did you do the design in our user room meeting with Bob, or? Tammy, you were pretty comfortable with the design?
Yeah, because I remember the meetings over at the jail, in their meeting room or whatever, with, yeah.
No, I didn't, I didn't go to any of those, did you, Bob?
Yeah, I went to Wolf.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so Bob and you.
So yeah, we thought, you know, we had three people in the exec team and exec board members and three in the others, because there are going to be times when people can't make it, or, you know, maybe, you know. So at least, you know, I feel that everybody should be a part of that process, one way or the other, because I think you, you know, you, you are highly interested, I assume, and I think you should be a part of that, one of those, one of those two teams. So I don't know if we need any action or anything on that, or if any discussion, I think.
I don't think so. That can all be decided through emails and the loop on that.
And I'm sure Craig and I will be working together in June here to kind of keep the rest of the board informed. Like Craig said, we have a meet and greet on Friday and then Tuesday. It'll be the first meeting, so I'm sure Craig will be sending something out to the administrators involved in doing things on this. Yeah, but as soon as I forget, you have consensus of who's going to be serving on that, so.
And one of the things that will be quite different is the makeup of the ICS team. I said we have, we have Jeff Schultz, who everybody is real familiar with, and I think he's the only one, right? And the rest of them will be new. He assures us that it's the best they have for, they're the upper crust anyway, so.
Well, the, the individuals that we've worked with on the previous projects are tied up on other projects right now and not available. And so I did ask for them to come, to be brought back, and so they're, they're not available. I told Jeff, the same thing I told along, is we want the A-team. It's in the contracts that as we go through this process, if the board or the superintendent is not happy with the way things are going, or if somebody needs a replacement, that, that can happen at board request. So I told him that we need, that we are asking for the A-team, and he's assured me that he has the A-plus team as well. So he's very excited to get started.
Yeah, he also mentioned that, you know, the timeliness of getting started, making sure that we stay on track in order to reach our goal at the end, to have it open as soon as possible. So that's why.
We're approaching bid dates right now. You got to get this done, so we can get this done, so we made it out to bid.
It's reassuring to have Jeff. I mean, he, he's about as personally vested as you can get without actually living here.
Going back to.
I thought, I thought maybe he did live here.
Right?
Well, it seems like he was spending a lot of time here for us.
No, and that's completely genuine. He is, he is vested. So having him as a lead to that is, is very, very reassuring, yeah.
It's disappointment each time we saw.
It was heartfelt.
Yeah.
That must felt like you were just, you had to console him as much as he did any of us.
Yeah, that is very involved. So thank you, Dan.
Thanks, Craig.
And all right, we will proceed, and things will begin moving, so.
That's surreal. It's, it's beginning.
Yeah, pretty exciting. Amy?
So I have a video for the student board member report that they wanted.
Oh, lady.
Excellent.
Okay. I should have asked you that earlier. Why are you even nervous, Bob?
You related?
I don't know. Nope, good.
Hi, everyone. It's your vice president and president. Hope everyone's well, staying safe and healthy. So far during e-learning, we've done lots of things to keep our students occupied and have their spirits lifted. They enjoyed our prom photo blast with help from our old teachers' pictures, and we put it on Instagram Bingo that lots of students participated in. And then we also did the Senior Spotlight, which many of you already probably know of, and we had a great turnout with that. There's a lot of members in the community and a lot of teachers and staff there, which really helps boost most of the senior students. We can't wait for a spirit-filled year in the world's greatest high school.
Well, that's good. That's pretty exciting. I have a feeling we're going to be in for an interesting year. I sure hope they can meet one person with us. Sierra will have us play Bingo. All right, so thank you. Upcoming dates, you were finished with your report, right, Craig? So upcoming dates, graduation. That is the main thing that we now have an update or have concrete directions on. So Sunday at 3:30, graduation at four. Correspondence is coming around. Any other board business? Okay, second open forum. Anybody here to address the board? Okay, hearing none, seeing none. We're adjourned.
Second.
First by Bob Johnson, second by Keith. Say hi, hi.